I'd like to call the board the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education regular meeting on October 3rd, 2022 at 6:30 in the Mount Pleasant High School cafeteria. This meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is no time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed in the previous meeting or presented to the board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please turn off your cell phones and continue with the plugging.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Indigenous land acknowledgement statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Inishina'avi people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Inishina'avi people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial. We use land which the Saginaw-Jewawa Indian tribe has resided and who have continued to reside over centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Please, can you do vocal, please?
Yes. Gina Murphy.
Here.
Jessica Trigill.
Here.
William Pendle.
Here.
Tim Orker.
Here.
Dana Park.
Here.
Amy Vaughn.
Here.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to?
Yeah, first thing, under nine approval of minutes, the September 27th meeting technically wasn't an official meeting because we didn't have enough people, so that needs to come off, please.
Okay, thank you. And I'd like to add, under new business, a new meeting, and that is to determine who is going to be acting secretary for the remainder of this year before that changes over in January. So just finish out this here. Anything else? Okay, next is superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. We are continuing our schedule of having an updated every board meeting from either Mount Pleasant High School or Mount Pleasant Middle School. At our last meeting, we had Mount Pleasant High School administrators here, and this evening, we have Darby Weaver, principal of Mount Pleasant Middle School, here to give us an update on how things are going there. Thank you, Darby.
Okay, thank you for having me back. We are going to just do kind of a review of some stuff I've shared in the past, but with some new data as we've started our school year off this year. So if you go ahead and change the slide. So we just have multi-tiered systems of supports, which are the MTSS. We're going to look at some academics and behavioral data from today, and then I also have a little update about the Mount Pleasant Middle School DEI team that has been meeting. So on the first slide with data, we wanted to look at behavior. We've had two months, kind of August only had seven school days, and then our month of September. And if you remember, our goal is 80% in the green, 15% in the yellow, and 5% in the red. We've had a really great start at the middle school to start the school year. We've really been focusing on our positive behavior supports, which we've talked about in the past, but one thing that we're focusing on are the Euler drops, which are just kind of little tickets or coupons that we get out for positive behaviors throughout the building. And so far, with probably about 27 school days, we've already handed out over 8,000 Euler drops. And some of you might have saw on Facebook on Friday, we added some more fun kind of menu items with raffle boxes that they get to pick, different prizes that they would like to have, and then we also did some random Euler drop pulls every hour. Some got pizza, some had outside time, they did like sidewalk chalk in the front of the school, they got to raid the school store, a variety of things that we did every hour, and the kids absolutely loved it. We had a great day at the middle school, and we never really heard that much excitement over the Euler drops across the board, and it was just really fun to have the kids ask about them and when's the next prize, and when are you going to call the next names, and every hour it was me getting on the PA, and they were just very excited. So we think that that positive reinforcement, again, is something we've done in the past, but we're trying to do some more rewards with shorter increments of time. And looking at our behavior referrals, of course, in August, seven days, we did a really great job. I broke it down by sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, which was something that I had been asked for in the past, and then in September as well, well within our range of our percentages. And you can see, even when I was doing the data, there's not a ton of difference between the grade levels. They're kind of pretty similar, you know, around in the same range. So we also are using our data really specific. At the end of each month, I know I say month for August, but seven days, we were able to see what was the one main behavior that we saw for most of the behavior splits, and that was disruption. So our teachers really took that topic and came up with a lesson to do kind of some reteaching with the students, and they did a lesson of what disruption is and what disruption isn't in the class, and that we just make sure we're reteaching those expectations for our students. And with the September data, the success team or the school improvement team will need tomorrow, look at that data and see what type of reinforcement we need to do for October based around what type of behavior. And I'll tell you right now, that disrespect behavior is kind of up there for September, so we'll be arranging some sort of lesson for reteaching for our students that will kind of go throughout the month of September, or the month of October, to help reinforce our October data. So also, we've taken our NWA test already. We kind of did it early at the middle school, which was great, it's nice to get it out of the way. But you can see, we've broken it down, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Our green is where we're supposed to be with our 80% of our students being successful. And as you know, we're not there, but we do like to see our green get bigger as we move on from fall to our winter and winter to spring. Our yellow group there, that's that in-between group, and we're really trying to hit that group hard. We have our foundations classes for language arts and math, and we have some interventions in place. And then also, our departments for math, language arts, and science just spent their last department meeting, really digging deeper into their NWA scores to see what specific strategies they could do based on each hour to help increase those scores by winter. So that was math, and then we have language arts there. Language arts has a little bit of a stronger green color versus math. And then we have science on the next slide as well, and science always is a little bit higher, too. So science is more of our strength, then it goes to language arts, and then it goes to math. We also added one more component to our data this year, and is really trying to look at the actual cohort of students, so we can see where it is, the growth goes from year to year. So we're actually comparing apples to apples versus like apples to oranges. And you can see our eighth grade class there, where they were in seventh grade and where they were in sixth, and you have to remember, the sixth grade year was the COVID year, so we didn't have, not everybody tested because there was the virtual component on there, too. We gave them the opportunity, but not everyone took that opportunity. So you can see, like where the group was in sixth grade, how many were low, how many in seventh, and how many eighth, and you can continue to see that our goal, of course, is the number is less as they keep going from year to year. Any questions? And then the next one is the DEI update. Did you have any questions about the data before I just do one more slide? I know it was kind of fast, but you can go ahead and look at it closer if you have some specifics, but anything for data?
The one that strikes me as a little bit of the odd score is your math sixth grade, and is there a big difference in implementation between our other schools? Well, I mean, that would be the first time they take a NWA at your school, and so I wonder if it's more of an implementation than a true reflection, but I, do you think that might be what's going on, or is it something else that would just?
It does become a different NWA test at sixth grade.
Oh, that's what it is. I knew there was something different, so just the test is different.
Yeah, it's just the next kind of grade level jump up for it to be the sixth grade test versus the maybe like a 3.5 NWA, so that becomes a 6H or something like that. So it is different, but still kind of the same types of standards, but it takes them up to kind of like the next level.
But and so if if it were a test difference, can you help me read those tables with the three, the cohorts, because then we see it in the others as well? And I can't quite figure it. Hold on, let me see. So the first table for math has?
So if you look, if you kind of skip the COVID year and go to the seventh grade year, so when they went seventh grade, I just look at the 74 there for low. Do you see that?
Yes, and then now it becomes 61.
And so that's just kind of the simple piece to look at it, and then, again, I'm skipping COVID, even though it's there and important, it just kind of mixes up my mind with that data. So seventh grade for 104, and then when they took it in the eighth grade, it was 77 for low average, 75 high, and then went to 81. So it's it's kind of on the right track or path. We just would like to see it be more, right?
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks for walking me through that table.
I have another question. In terms of doing better in science and language arts and not as great in math, how does that track with other schools in Michigan?
So that's one piece that we're going to, for our kind of overall home improvement data, we're going to look at the NWA scores in the RASD-wide, and so we don't have that yet for the fall, and so I'll be happy when we look at the winter, we can easily have that, someone at the RASD puts that together for us. And so I think we just ask for that for us to do for our school improvement, maybe look at it next week. So I'll, I can bring that to you.
I also noticed that there is a difference in total number of students actually taking math. So when you, I'm assuming the people who aren't taking, like it goes from 253 to 219. So you have 30 less people taking it, and I'm guessing those are the ones who aren't doing so well in it.
So it just matters in the moment, like how many are enrolled, because one week will be taking math, one week will be taking language arts, and then compared to last year. So it's a difference. Like last year, we had 253 seventh graders taking math. This year, we only have 219 seventh graders, or eighth graders taking math. So that's how many we have enrolled.
Okay, so we lost 30?
I probably wouldn't say we lost 30, but I would say not 100% of our students test either.
Okay.
Our number this year is about 228, I believe, when I just put this data together. So we are down some students compared to last year. Last year's numbers were the highest we've ever seen at the middle school since we've had sixth grade in the building. Okay, then we can just go ahead to the DEI just update I wanted to share. We have our own middle school DEI team, and we have about 16 to 18 different people that make up or consist, that the team consists of, and it's parents, community members, staff. It just varies. Sometimes everybody's there, sometimes only a few are there, just kind of varies with attendance and work schedules, which are kind of difficult. We try to do them about 6 o'clock in the evening, but again, as the fall sports are happening, sometimes we have some struggles with attendance. We've met at least three times. We've been working on sharing resources, we spent some time studying our norms, we've also worked on a goal together, and we have some mini task forces that are working on communication, all school lessons, like our second step program, but specific lessons that we want to reinforce and emphasize in our building. They could be something as simple as like a bullying lesson, but we have a mini task force that's working on that, honoring and recognizing our students throughout the building and the diversity, also assemblies and presentations that we would like to bring in. We also worked on actually defining our goal, and as you can see, the goal that we came up with together as a team is to provide an inviting community where all students and all staff and families feel a sense of belonging, are safe, and have the ability to learn. And from that goal that everybody worked on putting together, we did some work on actually defining what it does mean to belong, to feel safe, and have the ability to learn, and I also added like feel welcomed in there, too. And we did some time defining it, we had the staff define what it is and what it isn't, and then we also had the students do an activity as well in their zero hours that our counselors guided, and they were able to provide some input of how they felt of what it looked like to be safe in our building, what it is, what it isn't, what it was to have a sense of belonging, all those types of categories they did. So we put that together, and the team just went, just looked at that for the input, and then we've also used that same input to help look at our perception surveys for students, staff, and families, that we wanted to make sure if there were any additional questions or clarifications we needed on some of our questions, so that we're gathering some really strong data from those perception surveys. And then from there, we're hoping to have those surveys out in the next couple of weeks, and then the team will really be able to look at the data and put some specific strategies in place that that we then, hopefully, we would love to probably do those surveys again towards the end of the year, so we can really show some growth with our strategies. So I think we've had a real solid start to our beginning of our team, but again, it's been a lot of kind of housekeeping stuff and really trying to get some baseline data and set a goal and go from there. We had Orange Shirt Day, which we honored last Friday, and it was really great. Students loved it and staff did as well, and I think the community really appreciated it. We actually had some students who approached a couple of staff members and just really thanked them. So I think that overall, it really meant a lot to them, and we had, we just had a great day on Friday, positive all around at the middle school. So any questions about the DEI? Okay, any other questions about the middle school?
Darby, I want to thank you for talking about the Euler drop and increasing positive messaging. I think that's really important, and to hear that the students wear a team is really nice, and so thank you for letting us.
And we have a new menu for October, so the kids are all ready to get more Euler drops for October as well. So thank you guys for having me, and I'll head back out to the J D's.
Thank you. Thanks, Darby. Thanks, Darby. Next under my report is the ESR update. At our last board meeting, we talked a little bit about how we spent ESR funding, how we allocated ESR funding, the process that we went through. So we want to talk about that this evening. Linda, Ginger, and I will all contribute to the presentation, but to lead the show, we're going to introduce Stephanie Binder. Stephanie is our new state and federal programs coordinator, and so we're going to guide us through all of this information tonight. And I promise she'll be kind to her.
Well, thank you. We're going to go ahead and get started. I just want to say, my first performance here at my grade has been, everyone's been very welcoming, and I've learned a lot about your programs. You offer a lot of wonderful things for your students, and I think they'll see the same this year when we talk about our ESR funds. So if we talk, if you're not familiar with ESR, it is the emergency relief fund that the government signed into place to help public schools address the impact that COVID-19 had on the schools. On the slides, you can see, those were the dates that they were signed into law. So the district, well, with the funding, there also was some allowable uses that we had to follow. So we first looked at the allowable uses. There's actually 15 there, I kind of looked through, and some of them are a little bit redundant. So just to give you an idea of what those allowable uses are, is we had to look at things that would implement key components of ELA and math, things that would add instructional support for Sterling students and provide smaller instruction. We had to ensure access to high-quality instructional materials, increase family engagement, provide social emotional learning opportunities, and mental health services and supports, implementing activities related to summer learning or supplemental after-school programs to address the needs of low-income students, students with disabilities, English learners, and students experiencing homelessness, improvement in access to technology, and improvement to facilities for air quality and safety. So those are the basics of the guideline that we needed to say within our parameters. So the admin team took those and the guiding questions that are listed there and really started to study, you know, and brainstorm what were the challenges that the district and students were facing, and then some strategies that would help to address those needs. So if you look at the back wall, you can kind of see, on there are the chart papers of what the admin team kind of went through. The blue papers are all those allowable uses, and the sticky notes are all the ideas and things that they had come up with to address them. In conjunction with that, they also looked at, and I say they because I wasn't here yet, but also looked at every month when they had the continuity learning plan, there was an open comments section in the board meeting where people could comment about needs or challenges, so those were taken into consideration, as well as a stakeholder survey was sent out, and that was sent out in December of 2021. It went to staff, it went to students, it went to parents. We had 705 responses. The slides kind of show who made up the responses. They were asked, you know, what type of students were in their family that they represented, and then what their role was, whether they were a guardian, or a teacher, or staff, or what that was. And then how, when, and we took those allowable uses and what we're allowed to do with the money, and they were allowed to check however many boxes of items that they wanted that money to be utilized for. So as you can see on that, there was a variety of responses all over the place. Our stakeholders, you know, really wanted a whole gamut of things, and it to be spent all over and on different things of those uses that I mentioned before. And I think as we go through each one of these grants, you'll see that's exactly how the money has been spent. So ESR 1, that one just ended. The final spending date was last Friday. This was the smallest pot of money, and this one was primarily really about the immediate needs of opening the schools back safely. So you can see that that was primarily used for those COVID precautions, the PPE, the foreign language school supervision, and, you know, getting Oilers online going and compensating the staff for having to do some of those extra duties that virtually school needed. So that's what the first pot was really used for. The next one is, well, with ESR 1, there was also ESR education equity. This one had a little bit of different allowable uses. This pot of money was specifically to look at educational technology for low-income students and students with disabilities that may need assistive or adaptive technology or equipment, or to provide additional health supports. So this pot of money was smaller, but it was used to get technology to put into place for those students with disability, whether it was iPads, AHT devices, or licenses that really helped promote those students to excel in school. The next pot was our ESR 2. This one goes until September of 2023. And a large chunk of this, though, was used for that hazard pay or the retention pay for staff. So all staff received, you know, a stipend to really give a nod to support, as you know, we're in the T-shirt shortage right now, so really just to give a nod to all that extra work that was spent on that and for teaching during a pandemic. Other things that COVID, or excuse me, that ESR 2 was spent on was additional staffing. There were different interventions put into place at each of the different buildings. Summer school was a big part of it. As you guys know, we had the mobile book clubs and the big partnership with PEAK, scholarships. And then again, there were still some virtual needs, so some overloads for teachers that were still carrying virtual duties and cover classes. And then various curriculum and digital licenses were paid for out of ESR 2. And then ESR 3 is the one that goes until September of 2024. Some of these items we're still planning for and beginning to put into place, but what is planned for in what we are doing, there's a variety of things. One of these being the liaison officer. We're looking to implement a school nurse. As you know, we've recently put in another high school assistant principal, the middle school dean of students. All of those interventionists are ready for math core positions are still out of here. Maintaining those project aware counselors an additional year. Then some professional development for staff, looking at diversity, identity, and inclusion training, among some various other trainings. We're looking at some big-ticket curriculum items, looking at a new K-5 math curriculum, a K-5 ELA curriculum. We just recently had a 6A social studies curriculum, and then also have budgets for some professional development for the teachers to implement those. We also have money allotted for summer school again for this school year and the following. So again, that partnership with PEAK and some high school summer credit. And then some other additional student services to help students get involved here at Mount Pleasant is, you know, helping with those instrument fees for our band students, the student athletic fees, the fine arts fees, helping with some of those fees, as well as doing some after-school scholarships. And we're also looking to help pay for some of the field trips so that we can get students out into the community as well. So these are the main ways, as well as, I'm not going to read them all to you, but as well as one of the other things that we have in store for ESR 3. If you have any questions, I'll answer them to the best of my abilities, but it is a continuous journey, as you see, it goes out until September of 2024. So we will continue to monitor it, see how we've spent our money, see if there's additional needs that arise and any things that we need to adjust.
Okay, I just, basically, the ESR 3 money, the ESR money was to help us recover from COVID, correct? So did we go to the staff, you know, and say, what do you guys want to do, or what would be the best to help these kids? I mean, did we go to each of the schools and ask them what their requests were, and then did any of those?
So our teachers were able to collaborate through the surveys, and then also through the administrators that participated in our brainstorming sessions and in our collaboration sessions. So everyone's voice was heard in a variety of different ways.
Okay, but who made the actual decision of where the money went?
It was a collaborative decision with the administrators with our team here, and with our teams from MDE. Also, if we go back to allowable uses, that sort of set the tone for our work to begin with.
Okay.
My main questions have to do with salaries that are paid out of this, and so let's say our middle school dean of students or our high school assistant principal additional positions. Does that mean that when the ESR funding stops, these positions will no longer be funded? That's my impression here, and I'm guessing, you know, how we, if we find these positions useful, will we be able to wiggle our way to try to find money to continue these positions? Because I'm sure it's tricky.
I think we could probably all try to answer that question. I mean, the short answer is, we believe that we want to keep these positions, right? So it would be a matter of finding out. All the positions are posted as grant-funded positions, so the people and the physicians clearly know that it's grant funding, and we have the grant funding until we don't, and then we have to figure out something else. So I think as we move forward and look at our priorities and see what positions we have in place and what are really making a difference, we may be in a spot where we have to make some tough decisions, but we're hoping we can keep as many people as possible.
Thank you.
The one thing that I did want to point out, too, on the ESR 1 formula, there's two different numbers there. It is important to remember that because these are federal funds, we are required to share with other schools in our community, so like Saginaw-Jewawa Academy gets a portion of it. So we work with them directly so that they tell us what programming they want to have in place, and then we're able to work with them. So that's the same for our title funding and those kinds of things. I know you all are aware that we do that.
I know that a lot of the stuff that's included under ESR 1, for example, is not stuff that we need to continue right now and not we'll need to continue anytime soon. I'm wondering, I assume we're collecting data on, you know, what's working in terms of how we're spending ESR 2 money? Is that a safe assumption?
Right, right. So especially, I'm guessing that you're thinking about like the academic pieces that are supporting students. Yeah, definitely. So that would be through our NWA, through our other assessments that we're doing throughout the school year, so that we can track, sort of like what Darby showed you this evening, tracking a cohort of students, so that we can see how effective our interventions are as we move forward. But you are correct that if you think about where we were at the time that we had to spend ESR 1, we were spending it on PPE, on plastic shields in our offices, you know, mounting, hand sanitizing dispensers and those kinds of things. So you are right that that's not a priority any longer, but at the time, that's exactly what that money was for, was to help us be able to return to in-person instruction as much as we were able to do. So and I'm with you all the way that I hope we don't. So and I'm with you all the way that I hope we don't.
I guess my problem here, looking at it, is, you know, I'm looking at this is, this is supposed to be helping them get caught up. I don't know how the student services really do that, you know, providing a hundred dollars for athletic fees, the student. I mean, I realize those are all nice things, but I I don't see how that really affects their getting more caught up on the core curriculum. And same with, I well, I'm not done. My other thing is the curriculum. I thought um the curriculum committee had money that that paid for these. And yet we're using our S R money to do things that, I mean, I I don't understand. These are normally money that we're we're doing anyway. So why are we using S R money on money that's already budgeted there? I I, you know, those are my two things is I'd rather see us put more money into getting bodies in there to help those kids get caught up, whatever that's going to take. Because we only have another year, year and a half of this money. I'd rather see you get people in there and counselors in there to help them do that than to provide these extras. That's my personal opinion.
I think studies will show that um the more kids are involved in extracurricular activities, the more invested they are in schools and academics. I just, I can speak to that.
Dana, that's exactly what I was going to say. I do agree with you, Sheila, for some of the curriculum stuff, I I had the same question. But for the student services, I do believe that covering athletic fees and fine arts fees and instrument fees is critical for participation. And we know that when our students are doing these kind of activities, their their emotional love being increases, which is directly leading to their academic performance. So for me, that that doesn't raise a flag at all. Um, I I'm not sure how much of that that money, that how much the curriculum and digital licenses, how much of the pie that is? Is it a small pot or is it a big pie? Piece of pie.
Um, I'd have to pull the specific data and get back to you on that. But I I do know that um the general fund budget per curriculum is only fifty thousand dollars. And that wouldn't even cover the first two pieces on this list here. So it it definitely is not substantial enough to pay for all of these out of general fund. Um, and I think there's also a lot more digital licenses now too that we're learning this online and we're going for a one-on-one initiative. There's a lot more digital licenses than we've had in the past to help the learning progress. Um, but all of those other little pieces that you're seeing here would not even come from that fifty thousand dollar pot. It would have been maybe child grants that were funded or, you know, finding little bits here and there that they could. So there's definitely not just a big pot of money in our general fund that we didn't spend on this stuff.
Oh, and I understand that. That's not my question. My question is, the general consensus is a lot of people would rather have the help to get these, the bodies in there to help these kids get caught up. I mean, I know our reading and and everything else is atrocious at the elementary levels. And there's no fault other than COVID, you know? Uh, you need people to get in there, especially for these young kids, you know, to go the one-on-one and to and to get them caught up and and that kind of thing. And, you know, these are all nice, but I, you know, I just think we're spending a lot of money and not really going to get very many people caught up.
So one of one of the pieces of guidance that we received from the Michigan Department of Education was to determine ways that we could have a long-term impact with one-time funds, right? So the staffing piece, we exactly our conversation earlier, it's great. It's great to have more bodies to be able to help and support our students in smaller groups. But but that that will, some of it will have to go away when our S R funding leaves. M D E guided us to look at things specifically like curriculum that could have a long-term impact after our one-time dollars are gone. So the last time we replaced the math curriculum was two thousand eight, ten, something like that. And our E L A curriculum was a little bit more recently. But when we're talking about buying a full set of curriculum, you all saw this summer how expensive the social studies curriculum is and how quickly that adds up. So that was part of their specific guidance again, find ways that we can have a long-term impact with one-time money. So if we're purchasing math curriculum, E L A curriculum, social studies curriculum, and we can use that ten years, twelve years, that is a long-term impact with this one-time money. So I do understand what you're saying. And unfortunately, our general fund budget has never had enough to replace curriculum. Since I've been employed by the district, we've largely relied on tribal grants um to be able to replace and update curriculum. And that's not sustainable either when we look at um, you know, the amount of grand dollars that are available, which certainly isn't as much as it used to be.
Well, and I'd like to reiterate that teachers did have a say in what was going to be most useful over the long term. And I'd also like to say that things like paying athletic fees or paying fine art fees, those are things that hopefully, you know, maybe some research shows will obviate the need for other kinds of interventions down the road. So I think that's a positive intervention rather than a restorative intervention.
Okay, but that one's going to go away too. Well?
Get what we can. And I I do like that it's so diverse. I think that's something you started, your presentation was saying, like the needs that were, people, this one, this to be, we're all over the place and this is all over the place. And I think it's a positive aspect because we know we have a lot of different kinds of learners and what might work for one might not work for another. And so seeing something this vast, I I find it very uplifting, so.
No, no, that, but even if you have humans and talented humans, they still need resources. And the quality of resources they have makes their work more effective and efficient, much like N W B A, right? Having that information, that high-quality information turned around very, very quickly by using technology is a great help. So giving people that have good resources and tools to be able to do their work is a great value. Just having people in the room is good, but it's not as effective, efficient, and hopefully cost-effective. I think in the long, you know, hopefully we'll see some kind of impact by some of these tools. And I'm sure you'll find some of them didn't work as well as other ones. I mean, like any tool, you have to try and see how they work. And I think this has been a great opportunity to be able to leverage that, see what works for our community and how it pairs well with the educators and the curriculum and the systems that we have in place.
I will say one of the great things because of our community is we did not have to look to S R funding for technology or for air quality improvement, those kinds of things, because we already have that built in with our bond funding. So that gave us a little bit more flexibility. When I talk to my colleagues across the state, they're taking significant portions of their S R funding to improve air quality, or we're we're able to do that through our bond funds. So that is a a bonus and and a real um point of pride for our community to support us in the way that they've had so that we can do some other things with S R funding.
Would you say that um by being able to use the S R funding on certain things, it's been able to allow other things to happen that maybe aren't followed under this? Like I'm just looking at things like um uh reading eggs and and I have salad stuff. Those are things that we've had, however, um had a great cost, you know? So would you say that we are benefiting in other ways um because of this? That maybe that has allowed some other money to be freed up for it?
Yes, in in some instances, for sure. Like I mentioned earlier, a lot of these were funded by maybe a tribal grant. Um, not spending the tribal grant for Odysseyware because it's in here allows us to then pay for Odysseyware in twenty twenty five for twenty twenty six when we don't have the necessary funding. So it would help, it's definitely never, so that's an example, like just looking at this one today.
Can we, can we look at like dollar breakdown, like how much is under professional develop- development? How how many dollars are in there? How many dollars are being sent spent for the summer school? How many are, you know, ju- and it doesn't have to be exact. I'd like to know, I mean, if we're out of that five million, how much of it's additional staffing? How much is for the curriculum? How much is for the student services? I mean, the student services end up being, you know, not very much money, then it's not really a big question. You know, so people are seeing that and they're thinking, you know, why are we spending money here and not putting it here?
We can definitely do that with a caveat that Ginger and Stephanie are working on this like every day, all the time. And we're really just.
Just a basic.
Yeah, we're just getting to the point where we're just starting to spend S R three dollars. So um I know that the last month they worked really hard to make sure that S R one was all wrapped up. Um, so I I think we can put some general numbers, you but knowing that it's uh either S R three especially is somewhat of a a moving target right now. Any other questions?
Well, I want to, I want to thank you because I know that was probably another work. Uh, but I think it's really nice for our community and for us to see that. Um, and um, yeah, so thank you.
And you have to promise to come back, Stephanie. Okay, the last item under my report this evening is um our open school board position. Um, I have been updating you all quite regularly uh regarding our open position. And um this evening, we we need to have a conversation regarding uh how we would like to move forward. We do have twelve applicants for the position. And you all have copies of their resume and position um interest statements. Um, and so I I mean, I I think, just so everyone in the public knows, um, our board can decide to interview everyone, to interview some of them, to interview no one. Um, the the stipulation is whatever decisions you make have to be made in public. If we do interviews, the interviews have to be held in public and we have to have the position replaced by October nineteenth. Um, but everything else is up to you and your decision, so um I'll stop talking and take notes.
I mean, given the time crunch and given our desire to, you know, make this as transparent as possible, I would like to suggest that we have a special meeting next week for voting um and for whatever else we decide to do in terms of interviews or whatever, candidates introducing themselves. We don't have to decide the time and date right now, but I think it should be next week, not our next scheduled meeting.
I think um, I know some of us were through the the announcement saying we were asked. Um, so if we can schedule that as soon as possible, I think that's in our best interest just because we know that people's schedules get so, like, we need to make that a priority. The first spot has to be filled. Um, so if we are able to before the end of the night or um I, uh, but definitely, I think you're absolutely right. Jessica, we we should just plan on scheduling it for next week.
Are, is is the concept just for the board to meet? Or are you asking for the the people who've applied to come to that meeting as well?
We need to decide that. We we can decide that now um through our conversations if we want to interview um and how many we want to interview, if that's all of that sum. Um, yes, but then it it just has to be an open meeting because it has to be open to the public in the same way that all of them are.
So we want to make that decision at the next meeting or do it right now?
We take that decision tonight so that if we are going to meet with, if we decide that we are going to interview, we can interview next week and able to have them in place by the seventeenth.
I would be in favor of this because I think it's a big decision. Um, and it's also something where we want all of us here. Um, I would hate for one of us not to be able to be at that meeting when, you know, it's a big vote. Uh, and so I'd be in favor of a meeting next week. I would actually, I I know this, so I would say we have a good problem is that we have a lot of applicants. And I I'd like the public to know that it's pretty astonishing to see this many applicants and to see not only that, but the quality of the applicants that have applied. I kind of blew my mind away in in the greatest of way. And so um I think it's important to note. Uh, and so because of that, I would find it very hard um to make a shortlist. And if we have a meeting dedicated solely to this, that we can actually say that to do them all. Uh, I mean, I understand this is all of time and that, but that would be probably what I would be towards.
So historically, we've interviewed.
Yeah.
I think maybe once or twice we just did it because it was literally for like three weeks or four weeks. So we did not do that. Keep in mind, no matter what, it usually takes about twenty minutes, fifteen to twenty minutes per person. So times twelve, so we're talking five hours or so of interviews if we do the entire group. Um, the other thing I'd like to offer is I went back and looked at the questions that we've asked in our last round. Um, and I have, it's kind of two things. I shared it this afternoon with Jenna and Amy. Um, there was like a bank of questions that had been created, but it's three pages. And then from that bank, because of the time limits, we had to narrow it down because there's literally wouldn't have been enough time to have an in-depth conversation with everybody online. So um the main list went from twenty-six questions and in the end, we ended up having nine questions. Um, but what helped is that added consistency. So we were asking all the candidates the same questions repeatedly, which helped like a job interview. They, everyone would have the opportunity to respond in the same way. The other thing that we talked about was um should we release the questions ahead of time or not? Um, I don't think we did, but the problem with that is it's the first person is the only person that doesn't get the questions. Everybody else gets the question after everything ends, right? Um, but on the other hand, then it gives people a lot of time to prepare or to have someone help them prepare a response. So those are the things that we weighed. Um, I'm more than happy to shell, to share the big database or quickly kind of go through what the questions were if we'd like, or just pass them around, let, send everyone a copy to figure out. But I would recommend that we would have set questions in a set process that each one would have. If they wanted to do an intro and then we ask them six questions, um kind of an idea, um to be able to go through that process. But again, what I remember, I mean, by the time they come in, sit down, it's twenty minutes. So it's going to be at least twenty minutes per person, which is, in my mind, it has to be two nights if we're going to interview all of them.
If I remember from the last time we did this and there were only three of us, um, it was more like a debate um in that we were all there and all answering questions rather than one person sits down and answer questions.
Jessica, you're right, that's from the memory I had. The other thing is that we strongly advocate for having the questions given ahead of time so that it isn't a difference between each candidate for an equitable, for equity. Um, if, you know, people number two through twelve hear the first person ask the questions, that's not fair to the first one. And so I think we need, we would need to release the questions. And from equity standpoint as well, um, there's good data that shows that, you know, it's no element surprises better. So people can, you know, just perform better in an interview, especially in these stressful situations. Um, but yeah, you're right, it's twelve. So I don't know, can we make a shortlist today maybe? Uh, if we say twelve is too many, that we cut it down?
I I'm not against a shortlist, but that involve us nominating people to bring back for this next meeting?
Or some kind of mechanism to figure out who are the for candidates, lie candidates, whenever we decide to be able to.
I would, yeah, I would rather we do it in one night. So if we think that twelve is too much for one night, then maybe we cut the list issue half. We can maybe see tonight if we can agree on a shortlist.
Yeah, and I would like to point out to the community that we have all seen all the materials presented by all the applicants at this point.
And also to clarify, so the window closed at four thirty today.
Right.
So again, everything has been submitted, that's been submitted.
I wonder if um because of the length of um time it takes to really interview someone. Um, and I totally agree that the questions should be out there so that someone can can prepare. Why would we really want to surprise someone? We really want their best thing. That said, I wonder if we have um our candidates prepare their opening with asking them to hit some bullet points. Here are the things that are most important to us. Let us know in your opening five minutes or whatever it might be, how this all fits together. And then just kind of off the top of my head, because I know it could take quite a while. Not that that's necessarily a problem, but to to cut the the process down and give everyone equitable opportunity.
And and I would like the opportunity to ask some follow-up questions that have not been prepared in advance necessarily. That's my preference.
So I guess then the process becomes how do we want to narrow down the list? I did read through um following the procedures. If we do any type of reading system, uh which we do have the opportunity to do, we just have to then speak in public how we chose those people amongst us. So like you're reading through the list and let's say you say one and three, you know, I'm by name, you would just then have to say why it was one and three or what you used for the mental process to get to one and three.
I'm I'm fine with using that process to create a shortlist.
We'll do that too, Sheila.
Do we have to do that right now or is that something that we can send? Or is that something that we can send and then you make?
It has to be done in a public meeting, unfortunately, so.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just.
We need to have someone appointed by the 19th.
Yeah, I understand that.
But the question was to me.
So are you asking tonight, you want us all to give, like, I have my top four.
Okay.
I can, I can do that or, you know, whatever.
Well, I'm just thinking that might be the best, because otherwise the scenario would be that we would have to, as I'm understanding it, and please for those that know differently, Tim and Jen, please correct me if I'm wrong, but as I'm understanding it, if we were to take the time to say, we need more time to look over the applicants, we would then have to, let's say, hold a meeting, an open meeting on Thursday to then say why we chose the six that we chose to invite them into next week to then have another public meeting to interview them in order to have them. That's how I'm understanding it. Okay. So we, like, what we couldn't do is look at them in private or on our own and then send an email that says, okay, hey, one and three are mine, two and six are mine, that type of thing. We can't do that, unfortunately.
Okay. So how do you want to do this?
I might just do.
So if, if you, if you all want to say your list verbally, I can take notes and we can compare maybe who's our top, like, if everyone has the top four or six, I don't know.
So before we go and help rename them, I'll name who the 12 applicants are so at least you'll know who are we looking at. So it's Amy Shabuz, Elizabeth Husband, Christina Hug, Rosanna Keshick, Andrea Jasper, George Doran, Melissa Isaac, Shelley Reel, Chelsea Kalpliskey, Joel McDonald Snyder, Nadia McDonald, and Tyler Markin.
So I guess would we want to set a number of how many we, kind of what is our max number in our minds? If we all kind of propose different people, if there's a few of us that have overlapping people? Do we hope to interview six? Do we, I mean, the only reason I say that is if we, there's six of us and if we all come through and we each say two, we're right at top if they're all different. So I just didn't know if there was a way that if we want to publicly say our top two, three or four, however, whatever number, and then if there's any overlap or whoever kind of gets kind of the most interest within that. We look at those up to maybe six people. I'm, I'm very much open for, for feedback on that. I'm just trying to think of it to be the most effective way possible that we can, we can use our time for that.
Maybe we can see what happens. Because I mean, it's hard to say until we say. We might have very different first and, you know. So maybe we can start with top two choices and see how we fit. And maybe magically it will work to not be 12 people.
Okay. All right, someone let's start with our top two.
I'm, I'm ready.
Okay, okay.
I have Melissa Isaac and Andrea Jasper.
And those are actually my two as well.
I'd like to get two.
Okay, my top two were Shelley Reel, and I'm going to tell you why. I, I like the fact that she's a tribal member and she was also recommended by the two, she had two recommendations from the tribal leaders and I really respected that. My other one was Joel McDonald Snyder. I liked her history. A, she's with the G I R S E D, which I really thought was a benefit to the board. And she has a lot of history with Mount Pleasant Public Schools. So those would have been my top two and those are the reasons.
I guess my top two are Melissa Isaac. It's hard to say enough good things about Melissa Isaac. She is a powerhouse. She works with the Michigan Department of Education. She is a strong leader in the Second Onchibua Indian Tribe. I also would like to recommend Rosanna Keshick. She also belongs to the Second Onchibua Indian Tribe. She's played multiple roles within the tribe, including in their language revitalization project. And she has been on their Call of Duty Regents. And I would like to say Melissa Isaac for all the reasons stated and Tyler Markin.
And I'm Jasper. Her social, her special life background, I think could be a great advantage to us and her depth of knowledge there in the community. And then Christina Hug, I think someone with some medical experience and her work on the Senate Advisory Board has been exemplary. I think that those are two very high ranked candidates also.
Well, that puts us at seven. I mean, are we comfortable with, with seven? I mean, that.
I mean, it feels more reasonable than interviewing 12. And if we all feel that way, that, you know, we kind of voiced in that process.
Well, and we've had a significant amount of consensus here, so.
There's a lot of overlap.
Tucker?
So are we okay moving forward with the someone that we're sharing then?
Yeah, we just probably say their name.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just verify. Melissa Isaac, Andrea Jasper, she goes by Angie, Shelley Reel, Joel McDonald Snyder, Rosanna Keshick, Tyler Markin, and Christina Hug.
So now because we have to determine the questions, so we can give it to them? Can we get all the other?
If Tim wants to share the initial nine, I guess that's one of the things. Do we want to take a look at the initial nine or do we want to take a look at the initial 26? For just, for ranking purposes? We don't have to ask nine questions. Or we can change something up if you look at these and say, you know, I really want to know X, Y, or Z. We can certainly change one of those questions out for something else. It's just at least a jumping off point so we're not reinventing.
How about just kind of go through the list of 26, just kind of general questions that it can kind of appeal? And then I can kind of show where we narrowed it down last night. Again, I think we're in a different place than we were at that period. So there may be different questions, different ways we want to go about this.
And I would like to ask if we're going to try to use Dana's suggestion of offering a few opening questions to let them prepare their opening statements and then have the opportunity to ask questions as they arise, follow-up questions?
And I, right after I read this, I will email to everybody. So you'll have a copy of it in front of you. I'm going to go through this real quick. Why are you interested in serving? What do you see your role as a school board member? What contributions do you feel you could make to Mount Pleasant Public Schools? How do you feel Mount Pleasant Public Schools can improve the academic achievement of students and the professional development of the staff? What are the challenges facing Mount Pleasant Public Schools? What are the biggest challenges facing public education today? What qualities, skills, and experience do you bring to the board? If you were faced with a tough issue as a board member, what would you do to get the needed information to help you make your decision? What do you see as the roles and responsibilities of school board members? At times, you may be caught between legitimately opposing views. There are, there may be a difference between your personal point of view and the policy or law that you require a bonus trustee, how would you handle this? What do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate? Describe how you will advocate openness and democratic process in all board activities with emphasis on team decision-making and consensus. Are you willing to pursue the skills, the knowledge, and the training necessary to become a fully functioning and effective school board member? Provide examples of how you might accomplish this. When voting on issues, are you always willing to put learning first and give privacy to what's best for students in the Mount Pleasant Public School district? What would you like to see changed in Mount Pleasant Public Schools? And how do you envision your role in that change? An average month for a school board member includes about two to five scheduled meetings and perhaps another three school or community-related activities. In addition, there's a daily email correspondence required reading and district updates. How will you fit this into your schedule? As a board member, you'll be asked to make decisions where you must put aside what's best for you, your family, your friends, and your school to do what's best for the students of the entire district and what does that mean to you? After a review and discussion of significant issues, the board operates by a majority vote. When the majority vote is different from your position, how would you manage the situation? Working effectively with other school board members and the superintendent requires skills in communication and decision-making. How do you see yourself working with other members of the leadership team? What is your vision for the education in this community? How do you view the relationship between the Board of Education and the administrative staff? If appointed to the board, would you seek reelection when the appointment expires? Describe your responses if a parent cornered you in a grocery store and asked you where you support a particular hot issue. In times of good and bad, our spouses and children may become conduits for the community to get access to you as a school board member. Please describe how you would handle these types of situations and have you discuss this with your family. What will you do to become an effective? What would you do to become a more effective as a Mount Pleasant Public School board member? Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student need, state and federal law, staff considerations, and your personal value and beliefs to determine how you'd vote on the issue. Again, this was generated in June of 2017.
Yeah, there's a lot of redundancy in some of that stuff.
And redundancy in it. The final list that came down to was why are you interested in serving? What qualities, skills, and experience do you bring? What are the challenges facing Mount Pleasant Public Schools? What would you like to see changed in the district? And how do you envision your role in that change? How do you view the relationship between the Board of Education and administration staff? What will you do to become a more effective as a Mount Pleasant Public School board member? As a board member, you may have to make decisions that you must put aside what's best for you, your family, or your friends and do what's best for the district. What does that mean to you? If appointed to the board, would you seek reelection? Is there anything else that you want us to know that might help us with your decision? Or do you have any questions for us?
Why would you ask the reelection one?
I don't remember that.
I, I don't think that's a.
I would agree with you.
Yeah, that's a new one.
These are 2017 questions and I don't remember all of them.
And just for those to know, I did just email them all to you as.
Oh, very good, thank you.
They're in your email.
I mean, I would like to say that we, given the number of people involved, given the information we already have on the candidates, I would like to strike any of the more basic questions about why do you want to serve?
Yeah, that's already been answered.
Yeah, I, I would like to get into the nitty-gritty and I will suggest that I would very much like to see one of the questions be, identify a recent board decision you feel strongly about. And, you know, I can't remember the rest of the text off the top of my head, but that question started with that, I think, would be a really useful question to ask.
Maybe we simplify it a little bit, but yes, I think that just was really good. I like, I'm, I'm thinking of what you said, Dana, and I'm wondering if, you know, we can narrow it down to maybe four or five questions, but ask them just like a debate would work so that we hear everyone's opinion on a given question at the same time. Because otherwise what we're going to have is a 2:15, is at their last. Candidates are going to be exhausted and then they won't get as much of our time. Or not our time, attention, right, like that, that brain space. And so if we could all have them all here if possible and have all of question one, then all of question two, so that, and it's also better because we'll be able to, you know, kind of evaluate the differences between the candidates or the lack of differences.
So are you, sorry. But for those that have attended, like, the League of Women Voters?
Yeah, that's.
You're talking about more like a piano to go through and.
And I believe that's what we did online when Jessica and I were in that interview process for the appointment of 2020. That's what happened. And I, at least as a recipient, I thought it was very fair. And then it really contrasted our viewpoints, which I think is kind of what we're after, right? To figure out differences.
Just, I, as I'm looking through, I'm trying to find the number of the one.
It's 26 is the one I wanted to.
So if you all, just as you're talking, if you tell me questions that you like, I'm highlighting them on that document so that we can do a standalone document.
I definitely want to hear what they think the challenges are and what they think the purposes of, you know, what are we supposed to be requiring these kids for graduation, you know, the student skills?
Do you want, what are the challenges facing M P P S or facing public education?
No, M P P S.
M P P S, okay. And then Sheila, I'm sorry, what was the, the second one?
What they believe the student skills should be. I mean, what is our purpose?
What do you think are the most important skills for students to have when they graduate?
What number is that, Sheila?
It's 11 on the bigger document.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So right now I have highlighted number five, number 11, and number 26.
I don't know. Question seven, what qualities, skills, and experience do you bring to the board? It's less generic than why are you running?
Yeah, I agree.
I would only, you know, five questions on experience if that could be the one. It's broad.
Could that be the, the introduction?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that would be a good, a good way to start.
I know this potentially could sound silly, but looking at question 16, it doesn't necessarily have to be worded this way. That's the, on average, a month for a school board member includes about two to five scheduled meetings, perhaps another three school or community-related activities. In addition, there is daily email correspondence required reading and district updates. How do you fit this into your schedule? I don't mind if we reword it, but I, I do think it's important to.
I agree.
Talk about the commitment that you, you are making. I mean, I think, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but I was initially surprised at how much extra. You know, it isn't just the Monday meetings that we're here publicly, that we, we are doing things.
I agree.
And the other one regarding changes that they'd like to see or what changes? There was probably, it was the one right before the, it must have been right before they make meetings and.
So what would you like to see changed in M P P S? And how do you envision your role in that?
Yes.
Can we, can we somehow modify that one to also talk about the positives too? I think each person, like, I, I like both. I like the contrast of both because I think we do a lot of really great things too and it's important to know what those highlighted issues are that they think are, are strengths.
Yeah.
If we went back to number five, what are the challenges? What are the positive?
Yeah.
Make that a pro con?
Yeah.
Can we, I mean, I know it sounds kind of silly, but sometimes maybe it, it would be nice that we can see whether our candidates realize the goal of a school board member. And I'm thinking of some of, you know, the perception can be different than the reality. But I, it, it's, I don't know.
So easy that is number nine.
I don't know.
Well, do we think it would be modified in some, oh, sorry, Jessica?
That's okay. I mean, I think that's kind of getting into the weeds, like, nobody knows what it.
Until you're.
Yeah, you're really going to have to scratch that.
Until you're doing it. Well, I guess then, I guess there is a question here about how do you plan on educating yourself about the school board? And then I think shows a commitment to asking, being willing to ask questions, being willing to attend conferences, you know, go to the trainings that we do and all of those types of things. But I think people are self-directed learners as well. So, and that actually helps us for whom we elect. Are they learners through reading? Are they learners through experience? Are they, like, what type of support do they want to come onto the board? What would be helpful to them? So I think something like that could kind of help them, but also help us with working like that.
More like what would you, what can we do to help you learn? Or how do you learn and what would you expect from the board to get there?
I think the question maybe is number 25. What will you do to become more effective as an M P P S school board member?
Yeah. That is better.
I, I don't know if we, if we say more effective because they're new, right? So maybe I'm just saying, like, would you become an effective board member?
I like that. And how many questions is that now?
Two, three, four, five, six.
That's seven.
Yeah. Well, I have seven people, so that means that they each can get one question whether you're the first and you're just okay. It'll be, it'll take us a couple hours.
So I can put these together in a document that I can share with the board and then share with candidates as I invite them to our meeting, which we actually probably should pick a time and date now for that.
Dana, was there any other questions that you wanted to add? No, thank you.
Okay.
Your conversations go ahead exactly.
Okay.
I got my calendar right here.
As do I.
So are we probably in the middle next week to give some heads up on time?
Be on the 13th, so.
The 13th is the League of Women Voters.
It's the League of Women Voters. And there are some candidates involved that are running for election and are on our list. So we got to be conscious of that.
So what, 12? Yeah. Would you guys be able to deal along with their 12?
Yeah.
I'm open.
I prefer the 11th, but I could do.
The 20th, the 11th?
Is there a reason we don't want it on a Monday? So that it's our regular school board time and all, we know all of us at least can make it.
I know Tim's doing some traveling and there wasn't a guarantee he was going to be potentially back.
But I should be back.
Okay, but you could, do we want to try to do it then? And how does that work for everybody else? It's the time, just the time.
That works fine for me. I never schedule stuff on Mondays because.
Yep, I get it.
So we want Monday at 6:00, 6:30, what?
We could keep it at 6:30, I'll make overtime. The other thing too is that whoever's coming on board needs to have their Monday night free.
Well, that's a good point.
And so if they're not, then that becomes an issue, and so that would be another reason to hold it on a Monday night.
Sure.
And are we gonna be at the Kenny School?
It's more convenient.
It is, but it does have to be open to the public, if people want to know the last time you did it, right?
Never mind.
And I think for setting it up as a panel, it might actually be easier in this larger space.
Yes, that's true.
So then we'll do 6:00 or 6:30, should we decide?
I think it's less confusing for the public. If it's open to the public, I would keep it at the same day, same time, just an extra Monday.
And, so we talked about that we would send out all of the questions before the end. I'm just kind of thinking through the process real quick. Oh, if a person cannot attend, does that take them out of the running? And that, I just feel like that's a decision that we should probably put some parameters. So, because I think everybody kind of knows somebody on this list, and we all feel strongly about the people we're advocating for, but is it a mandatory thing, I'm more, I guess it's a deal breaker or whatever, if they can't attend Monday night, that they are taken off of the shortlist for consideration?
I would like to suggest that we allow them to submit their responses in writing, with the understanding...
Agreed, yeah.
With the understanding that they're not gonna get a chance to respond to follow-up questions, and they're not gonna have a public platform.
Agreed, because only giving them a week's notice is...
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay. So the thought is that if somebody cannot attend, they could put their, they could put their answers in writing that could be read at that meeting, so it's still public, and that they just wouldn't have the opportunity for follow-up in that way. Do we, as we are going into it, again, just because it has to be held publicly, at that time, are we just kind of thinking on it? Do we want to be thinking on it with a certain frame of mind or point as we are entering in those conversations? Like, do we kind of, do we want to scale, do we want to just think about it in our heads, do we, who might be the best fit? Kind of what headspace do we want to be in moving forward?
I think we should vote that night, yes.
Okay.
I agree.
Unless there's Robert's Rules of Order reason not to, I would like to say that we just, you know, move to vote on particular candidates and take it from there.
Okay. So we're not necessarily rating it any formal way, we're just thinking kind of in a headspace.
We don't have a group record or a board system, we're just...
Perfect, we just had to kind of lay that out as well.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, is there anything else of the details that we need to hammer up with that?
I still think it's fantastic that we have that many people voting. I mean, I know it takes an interview process, and it's longer, but seeing the quality of this school, I thought that many people want to get involved in our school district made me very happy.
Well, and I think it's important to thank the individuals that aren't moving forward.
Yes.
It wasn't by any means because you didn't have a glowing resume as well, it was because we literally had so many great applicants that we're moving forward, and really, the majority of the people on this list have some type of credential that you might feel like we're missing from the board, or an experience that could help make the board even better.
Yeah, I feel the same way, it was really hard to make choices.
It was.
And so I just want to put out there, I think with the whole board too, that we appreciate and thank everyone that applied, that took the time to share out on social media, that read the application, that talked to somebody about applying. We all know that it takes time, effort, and energy to do so, and we're just really, really appreciative of that.
And also, we have lots of community members on various committees, and Jack, you're on the list now. So there's other opportunities to step in and to move forward to be a part of the district to be a member.
So I will follow up with the seven candidates. I will make the interview questions, I will invite them to the meeting next Monday, I will communicate with the other five candidates to let them know that they've not been selected for an interview, and Kevin will do the call for a school board meeting, and we'll get that rolling for next Monday night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just wrapping up my report, I know I said that that was the last thing, and I just wanted to mention two other things. First and foremost, you all know that we had a safety incident concern at our homecoming football game a week ago Friday, and I just again really want to thank the Mount Pleasant City Police Department, our youth services officers, that evening for that incident. We also had responders from Michigan State Police, Isabel County Sheriff, Central Michigan University Police Department, and the tribal police department. The response was amazing, the response of our staff was amazing, not only our administrators, but even elementary teachers that were at the game stepped up to help. The administrators from Macy Western were there, they stepped up to help, so it just really was a very reassuring event, that we had so much help, and we had so many people there willing to help us. We are on a bit of a break from home football games right now at diversity level. Prior to our next home game, which is October 21st, we will be coming out with updated protocols, so that we do not have a repeat incident of what we had at the game. So we did meet as a team with the high school, middle school administrators, and our youth services officers, and debrief from what we learned from that event, and we'll be implementing, with the help of some local agencies, implementing a no-bag policy, we'll be implementing sort of the surge like you do if you're headed to a CME event, that sort of thing, very similar to the protocols that we do, like when we have graduation and that kind of thing. So, as it stands right now, we will likely have at least two more home diversity games. We anticipate that we'll be into the playoffs into that following week. So, once all that information is out, I will definitely share it with you all, and then of course, share it with our students and staff and parents, but I just wanted to publicly thank everyone for all their help and support, and of course, you as well for being supportive of us as we went through that process, so.
We want to give kudos to the administration for getting out. I was at the game, didn't even know it happened until I got my text. I was walking back from the concession stand and said, what are all those cop cars doing out there? And then boom, I found out. So you guys did a really good job, everybody was very happy and very pleased with your expeditious way of letting it be known.
Thank you.
Sorry, I feel the same way, and I feel like the feedback effort from the community was similar, that it was minimal disruption for what happened, for the severity of what happened, and very well handled, and I think we talk about sometimes about the things that don't go well, but we need to also remember all the things that we did great. It could have been a very different night, and it wasn't, so I think we should take pride in this.
And our hope really was that folks were still able to enjoy the game, and the halftime show, and all the great things that happened. Our homecoming week was such a great week, that I don't want that one incident to take away from all the great celebrations we had. And just the last thing, I will just remind everyone that our administrators from Mount Pleasant High School will be joining us for the October 17th meeting, and at that point, I know at our last meeting, we heard some concerns regarding the dress code and implementation of the dress code at Mount Pleasant High School, we will be revisiting that conversation at our October 17th meeting, so.
Okay.
And that's all here for tonight.
All right, so at this time, we're moving into correspondence, we want to acknowledge that we receive correspondence from Nicole Wisney and Reeve Okenberg, and then we are moving into the citizens' request to address the board on any agenda, non-agenda item. As always, I will call your name, you will have three minutes to approach the microphone and to speak to the board. We are starting off tonight with Mark Perry.
We have an election coming up on the number eight, and there are three proposals on the ballot. Let's talk about proposal number three. This is the abortion proposal being pushed by the Democrats, including Governor Whitmer. It passed, it would allow for abortions right up to birth, including partial birth abortions, and even ending the life of a baby that survived the abortion attempt. It also allows minor children to get an abortion, sterilizations, puberty blockers, and sex-change surgeries, all without parental knowledge or consent. But what is a legal abortion, really? Those abortions are called murder, but if they're legal, can it really be called murder? Probably not. The death of these babies, even one second before birth, would become legal in Michigan with proposal three. This late-term or partial-birth abortion is not currently legal, but the passage of proposal three would change all of that, and in fact, would make it permanently legal, since the change would be a permanent amendment to the Michigan Constitution, making Michigan the most radical proponent of abortion and sex-change surgeries for children in the entire U.S. If abortion at any point, even one second before birth, is made legal, then what are these deaths, really? I believe they are, in fact, executions. They are premeditated and conscious acts, no different than the execution of the guilty serial killer. So now we have a tiny baby, even a newborn, newborn baby outside the womb, put to death by execution, exactly like a serial killer, but in the case of a baby, he or she has committed no crime, but still sentenced to death. Does this sound like something a moral or principled society would tolerate? And to make things even more stacked against the baby, there's absolutely no legal representation for this baby. Even the serial killer gets an attorney. Do we find any of this in nature? Does a mama bear ever execute her newborn cub? Yet some humans will, because they believe the mother has the right to kill baby because it's her body. But this logic totally ignores the rights of the baby, including the rights to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Rights the mother decides are to be unilaterally revoked, and the law refuses to stop her. In fact, the government promotes these executions with incentives. Are you familiar with the medical procedures used to execute these late-term babies? After prying open the skull of the baby at its base, a syringe is inserted, and the brain is sucked out. These babies feel pain after two months. Imagine the pain they feel at nine months. I personally reject a society where every whim becomes a right, where I have no responsibilities, I have purely rights.
Thank you. Next is Carol Sowieski-Gall.
I'm Carol Sowieski-Gall, I'm in Lincoln Township in the Mount Pleasant School District. Statement of Mount Pleasant School District reads, "If a student comes to a staff member to seek advice or to ask questions regarding a personal problem related to sexual behavior, substance abuse, mental or physical health, and/or family relationships, the staff member may help the student make contact with certified or licensed individuals in the district or community who specialize in the assessment, diagnosis, and treatment of the student's problem. Under no circumstances should a staff member attempt, unless properly licensed and authorized to do so, to counsel, assess, diagnose, or treat the student's problem or behavior. Why was this policy created? Was it to protect the school district, the school district staff from liability charges, false accusations, and responsibility for unqualified advisement? Years ago, a student who moved into the Shepherd's District falsely accused the principal of sexual misconduct. Eventually, it was cleared with the charges when it was discovered that this student did the same thing at previous school. Situations like this cost the district time, legal fees, and negative news reports. Maybe this policy was created to also protect the student from being led by inaccurate information or unqualified advice. Was this policy also intended to protect the rights of parents to monitor, care, and direction of their children? At the last meeting, I asked what programs are in place to protect our kids and create predator awareness. I also mentioned the predator awareness training I was required to complete as a volunteer at organizations that work directly with kids. These sessions gave law enforcement information, statistics, and video testimonies of convicted pedophiles. I polled teachers and staff in this district and found there's no requirement for specific training that focuses on identifying patterns and behaviors of child predators. I know that all staff members are background-checked as new hires. This process only identifies those who have previous charges, like the 268 registered sex offenders currently residing in Isabel County. We know from the experiences of the past two years if this is not adequate. I'm sharing information from the organization Darkness to Light. Child grooming is a deliberate process by which offenders gradually initiate and maintain sexual relationships with victims in secrecy. Grooming allows offenders to slowly overcome natural boundaries long before sexual abuse occurs. On the surface, grooming a child can look like a close relationship between the offended adult, the targeted child, and potentially the child's caregivers. The grooming process is often misleading because the offender may be well-known or highly regarded in the community. As a result, it's easy to trust them. Perpetrators work to gain the trust of parents and caregivers to lower suspicion and gain access to the child by providing seemingly warm, yet calculated attention slash support. A perpetrator gains the child's trust by gathering information about the child, getting to know their needs, and finding ways to fill those needs. Once the perpetrator begins to fill the child's needs, they may assume notice will be more important than the child's life. The perpetrators utilize tactics such as getting flatterings and meeting the other basic needs. Let me just wrap this up then. Please review the handouts and consider requiring predator awareness training for all faculty and staff, making our schools safer. We already do this with active shooter response training, and I think this predator awareness training is critically important and vitally important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Reeve Okenberg.
Reeve Okenberg, good moms for the pretty of Isabel County. I want to start by saying that I'm really disappointed this board up here has allowed voting to take place in this school. Not only have you heard it from people that have stood up here and spoke, I've been called a homophobe, I've been called racist, I know you all are well aware, I've been called white nationalist before for speaking my thoughts without having to call anybody a man, but not only that, but the last meeting ended after hours and hours, when it was the resolution that we presented, hours and hours, only to have a school board member promote everyone to go read the Vennet books. That was mockery, and that was insulting. I did not appreciate it. With that said, it was that I look for a review up here on why you did not support the resolution. Number one, I regret didn't support it because we already offer content alert. Well, news flash, we actually don't require content alert. Teachers may choose to do that if they choose to do so. I just want to make sure that the deceit isn't going to be able to be received as being truth. Another form of deceit that was offered was that we can find sexuality and gender content within the curriculum, and we've seen that curriculum and how we go to it on the website. Actually, if you go to that curriculum, nowhere in English Language Arts or any of the schools does it say that sexuality and gender content is included. Now, somebody else up here had said that there was law that was being used in regards to sexuality and gender, so I asked the superintendent if I could be provided with that information. She did so, and you'll find some of that information in this handout right here. The second sentence of this law very clearly says, quote, "These guidelines are voluntary and should not be considered mandates or requirements. Decisions by districts to utilize this guidance should be made at the local level and put in the normal community input process," unquote. I think that we did a really great job of asking for parents to have the right of content alerts, and then for their children to be able to be opted out with an alternative. And not only did we think that that was a great idea, on September 25th of 2022, it was passed with a 23/13 vote. The Michigan Senate passed Resolution Number 166. Within that resolution, it says, "Parents' fundamental rights is infringed upon when school districts do not have total transparency and do not defer to parents regarding their children's gender identity, sexual orientation, preferred pronouns," and then it goes on to say, "Parents have the right to direct any discussion regarding these topics with their children. Michigan Public Schools should not promote exploration of gender identities, gender puberty, or sexual orientation without parental consent." I ask you again, if you did not adopt the resolution, please look at your power... I ask you again, you did not adopt the resolution, please look at your policies. I know I'm at my three minutes. I'm wrapping up. Please look at your policies. We are not asking for you to remove this. We are asking for you to come up with a policy so that parents are alerted, and they do get the alert, they can act out, and they can have alternatives. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Justin Henry.
I just want to thank you guys for your efforts to maintain the credibility of your schoolteachers. One of the things that's often, as you guys talked about data and looked at, one of the gurus that I look up to is Dr. Hattie, who does the meta-analysis of everything that's effective in education. He looks at how effective, looks at all the research that's ever been done in education and compiles them. It's ongoing forever. And so it starts from things that have negative effects, things like retention. You guys know about suspension, stuff like that. It has things that are, it goes into like just developmental effects, things like mentoring and stuff like that that has a little bit of effect. Then we get into our typical classroom behaviors, like classroom teaching, classroom management, stuff like that. And then these are all rated on a scale where like, so obviously negative ones are negative and then zeros, things that just don't really affect kids that sometimes we believe they do. And then point four, it's like a hinge point of what good teaching generally is. And then when you look at those top 10 things, we always hear that relationships matter, you know? And I think he really puts into that, he gives the data for that about what matters in terms of student success. And when you look at those, the top three things that he talks about, he talks about collective teacher efficacy, the ability of teachers to work together to promote a vision, to promote a mission, work together. He talks about perceived teacher credibility. And that's one thing that I want to focus on with what's going on right now, because reality doesn't even matter. The perception of teacher credibility matters a ton to these kids. And we've had generations of people complaining about America's public education system, whether it's the people who wanted more money, saying that education was failing, or the people who wanted to steal money and put it into other pockets. So we've had lots of people that had lots of reasons to say American education was failing. But that wasn't believed locally. Everybody believed that national public education was failing. That became common sense. But only in the past ten years have people started to believe that locally. Have we started to have the attacks come down to locally where people believe their own community is failing at public education? And that's where you guys are critical, is to maintain that credibility because these students, the success of these students do matter whether they believe in them teachers, whether they believe that their schools are good. And when we undermine that, it doesn't matter how good the teachers are. The perception is actually more important than what the teachers are doing. And that, I think, is something that I want to, thank you guys for standing up for.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. First off is the approval of the minutes from the September 19th, 2022 meeting.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Next, we move on to new business, starting with a new hire.
And I will pitch him this evening for Linda. She had to leave for another appointment. We are recommending this evening the hiring of Steve Hofer as a physical education teacher for our elementary buildings. He will primarily be working in Kenear and Bellwas Elementary. We're happy to welcome him to our Euler family.
I have a question, Jennifer, as I've looked at this and maybe I've just missed it, but I don't see in the resume where he has, and must to even be considered, a certification.
So he would be an emergency certified teacher. We've had hire several this year. And so some of you may know Steve from his background, his experiences working with our PRX and RAP program. So he's been in the field for years, but you are right, he'll be under emergency certification and then has to make that commitment to go back to get his old certificate.
Great. Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve Steve Hofer as the new elementary athletic teacher? Ee teacher, please.
Seven?
Seven.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes, and welcome to the district.
And then next, we do unfortunately have one resignation, a resignation from Jocelyn Olepp. She is a special education teacher working at McHoyer Elementary. Her last day, she's asking for her last day to be last Friday, September 30th, and she was one of our new staff members that we hired this summer.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation of Jocelyn Olepp? Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And with regret, that passes. Next, we are moving on to student S1, 2022, 2023 recommendation.
You have a recommendation. You have worked back at this evening. We held a small meeting of a group of three board members to review a student discipline situation with a student and a family last week. And you can see the meeting summary there, based on the nature of the incident. Our group's recommendation is that the student be permitted to enroll in online learning, whether that be through Mount Pleasant Middle School or through the Way Forward program, as we work with the student, the student's family, and our special education department to complete a special education evaluation. So Sheila, Jessica, and Melina were the three board members that were present, since we did not inform it was not an official board meeting, which is why we're asking you to vote on this recommendation this evening, but certainly any of them could answer any questions if you have them.
I will accept the recommendation.
Second then.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes as presented tonight. And so that moves us on to item D, and that is that we have to elect a new secretary with Courtney's departure. So at this point, is anyone willing to step into that role through December?
I'm not a newbie. I can do it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll second that.
So all in favor of Melina taking over the role of secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think we're going to hear any. It passes. So thank you for stepping into that role. It's great. Appreciate it. Next, that moves us into the Board of Education discussion, and opportunity for any board member to discuss issues and concerns that they might have. I know we've done a lot of that tonight, just through our general conversations, but if there's anything else anyone would like to mention?
Two things. Do we do any kind of thing on this child grooming with our...
Yes. Ashley, Sheila, thank you for asking. Our teachers over the years have done the Darkness into Light training, that exact training that that handout is from. So I couldn't tell you the exact year that we've done it, but over the course of years, we've offered that to new staff members. So I think it'd be very appropriate to do that again for our staff because I'm thinking that we probably haven't done it in the last couple, but yes, it is a training that we've all gone through over time.
Okay. And then my second question is, I talked to you earlier that maybe we should, we have an issue, everybody's got an issue hiring people, that maybe we should consider offering a signing bonus if they, you know, go in for a number of years. I think it's something that should be discussed and maybe offered.
So we definitely can discuss it, and we can look at it. We do have to keep in mind that anything like that that we would do is tied to wages, so it is subject to bargaining. But it's definitely something that we can do as we go through the bargaining process with PDA this year. So over the last, let's see, maybe three years, five years, we've talked about it on and off, but it does seem sort of like we were talking about, there are some critical areas, special education, secondary science, where it seems to be even more challenging to hire staff members. We could look at ways we can structure that. But anything like that that we do, because it is a part of wages, it'd be subject to bargaining.
I'm bringing it up, that maybe we want to at least broach the subject and see what the possibilities are and what we could possibly do. You know, I think we need to compete, we need to do something that's going to compete with other people, and maybe if you give somebody a three-year guarantee that, or a bonus, that they might tend to do it. So anything that will get us good teachers for consistently longer.
And I like that idea that it's tied to a commitment to, you know, for X number of years, whatever that might be.
Correct.
It'd be nice to see some numbers on what we can afford and what that would, you know, if we're taking, if we're adding money to that pot, like what are we taking it out of? But I do think it'd be good to explore some of these plans. And I was also, I know we talked about exit interviews. It'd be great if in the next month or two, I mean, if we could see anything on exit interviews from these.
So Linda shared the spreadsheet with you.
We've seen one, I think.
Yeah, that's true. We did.
I mean, we haven't seen a consistent.
Okay.
It was one. It was the one we had a hard time getting. I remember that.
Yeah, there are multiple responses within that, but we can organize that in a better way.
And just see if we could see any trends, so that if we do have, so where I'm going at, is that if we do have limited money, which actually we do, is there one group that it makes more sense to allocate than first? Second, what you were saying, is it special needs, is it science? And if what happens, if we have mobile money, how much can we open it up? So that's where I was going with that.
Well, and I think it would just be fascinating to find out why we're losing people. I mean, I know some of it is just because we're their second choice and their first choice came up, you know, afterwards. But we are losing a lot of experienced staff too, and it'd just be interesting to know why.
Certainly.
I have one more. I know we brought it up tonight, but I thought it'd be important for folks to know that the school, so any candidate in the November elections for the school board, there is a public League of Bullets Voters debate. It's on Thursday, October 13th at 7:30 in the City Hall.
Jennifer, is there a possibility, I know that CMU in moment is down, is there a way, I've seen models before, that do you think they would be interested in pairing with us to do like a grow your own, as far as educators go? We have students within Mount Pleasant School District. I know we've got a program here that kind of delves into it, but possibly having a forgivable loan somewhere to go with CMU. If you come through our system, you enroll in CMU for education, you graduate, we will provide you with a job. If you're with us for X amount of years, then your student loans are forgiven. I wonder if there's a way for us to explore that.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look at that. Right now, we have the Educational Careers Program that has articulated credits with CMU and with Mid-Michigan College. So it's encouraging them, it's giving those students the college credit while they're still in high school. I don't know all the realities with loan forgiveness kinds of programs, but it seems like CMU is definitely more open to working with us as far as being flexible with student teaching, really helping us get students into the buildings, having them sign up as subs, and do all those things. So I definitely think that's a point where we could work on some stronger collaboration.
I'd certainly like to see our kids stay here.
Definitely.
Is there anything else anyone would like to add? I don't see anything at this time. I'm meeting adjourned.